Recording in progress.
Regular meeting of the Rio Del City Council, roll call please.
Mayor Garnes.
Excused.
Mayor for Tim Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Orr.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Woodall.
Excused. Please stand for the flag of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph M. Brown Act. Items requiring council attention while listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs, unless a binding is reached by at least two thirds of the council, but the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate attention. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Would anybody in the audience like to make a comment? Okay, do we have any hands raised? Do we get any emails soon? Right, we'll go ahead and close public comments and move on to the consent calendar. Would any member of the council like to remove anything from the consent calendar? Yep. Would any member of the public like to move any, remove anything from the consent calendar? Any hands raised? Emails, what's a consent calendar? No. No. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
I have a motion to a second?
Sure.
So please vote. And three zero. Thank you. Moving on to reports and staff communications, page forty-nine in our packets, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Carter and members of the council. So for this upcoming election on November sixth, the city's been informed that the county elections office is intending to open an in-person voting center in Rio Del at the middle school for the upcoming election. And it will actually be open for about five days prior to the election. Or four days prior to the election, so starting on Friday, or say, excuse me, Saturday, November second through election day. On Tuesday, it will be open to any registered voter living in Rio Del or not. The caveat to this is that the elections office has indicated that it will need volunteers to operate the voting station and we expect to be given some additional information to help distribute through the community, to help identify and find those volunteers who, you know, then go through training and whatnot to, to staff that facility, so we're excited about that. I know that there has been some concern that in-person voting in Rio Del may be a thing of the past, but it looks like the elections office is doing everything they can to provide that service here in Rio Del. And then just in case anybody is not aware, the Los Angeles outpost recently issued a news article entitled Calpars Planning to Move its San Francisco headquarters to Rio Del, So Why Are City Officials Worried? And so we encourage residents to read the article. I think it was fairly well-written. Very well-written. With that, we do have staff reports attached from various departments. We're happy to answer any questions that the council may have of staff.
Thank you, city manager. Council questions? Councilmember Orr, any question on the staff?
Uh, no question.
Thank you, councilmember Wilson.
Uh, just a correction, I think I'm the ballot office, okay, November sixth is one thing. If you are correct, yes. They make their letter go there. Or they change the law. I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And I just have one question for Chief Connor. I was wondering how we did over the weekend from a police perspective with wildness.
It was very calm while we were here. It shows by now much better than last year.
I'm really glad to hear that. It seemed calmer to me. But what do I know? So, thank you for that. And does any member of the public have any questions on staff reports? Nope. Any hands raised? Any emails? Okay, then we will go ahead and move on to ordinances, special resolutions, and public hearings. Introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance number four zero five dash two zero two four, amending the Rio Del Municipal Code, Chapter fifteen point zero five, Construction Codes to Establish Construction Activity Noise Regulations, and Chapter two point six zero Planning Commission Regulations to Election Chair and Vice Chair on a bi-annual basis, page fifty-four in our packets. City manager.
I'm going to go ahead and turn this one over to our community development director, Mr. Paul.
Okey-dokey.
Thank you, Mayor Proton, members of the council. Mayor Proton indicated this on page fifty-four of your packet. There are two minor text amendments, one related to our construction codes and hours of construction that are allowed and what's related to it. This one was brought to staff's attention as part of the PG&E project. Where the VPI crew were doing some underground work and apparently they were starting before seven AM on a few of the days. And so we got a couple of phone calls regarding that, which prompted me to remind myself that we need to address this. This has actually been an issue that's been brought to staff's attention probably a half a dozen times over the last ten or twelve years. And so I finally put it on the agenda. The, uh, the ordinance itself actually starts on page fifty-seven of your packet. And in summary, basically what it says, the hours of construction are limited to Monday through Friday from seven AM to six PM. No work is permitted on Saturdays unless approved by the chief building official and they would have to basically make application to to work on Saturdays. No construction activity will be allowed on Sundays or on holidays. And then if there are exceptions allowed, we require that they sign, we post at the construction site to notify the neighbors, the contractors, that this is an exception, that you're complying by the rules, whatever that exception carries with it. Other than that, it's pretty simple. I believe probably only talking points would be the seven AM and early to six PM seem to be reasonable times for construction activity Monday through Friday. Based on my review of a number of other city ordinances up and down the state, that does seem to be the time, the most common times for construction activity is seven to six PM. Other than that, you have any questions on that? I'd be more than happy to answer them. The other one included in ordinance number four oh five, that is four, testing the planning commission, the appointment of the chair and the vice chair. Part of the code requires that we actually elect every year, January, or soon thereafter. It seems like January comes around real quick. And so we processed the planning commission at our last meeting. And they suggested, as we discussed it, that we actually do it every two years. And so that is the other minor text amendment that's included in your package tonight. With that, I recommend you open up public comment. Take public comment, deliberate amongst yourself, having changes, identify those changes, direct staff to make those changes. And then continue the second reading for adoption approval to your meeting of August twentieth.
Okay. Thank you. So we will open the public comment period on the Rio Del Municipal Code, Chapter fifteen point zero five, Construction Codes.
I'm Sherwood, Three Painters Street in Rio Del. And I'm here to oppose the proposed construction noise ordinance as it would seriously impact everyone's efforts to recover from the earthquakes. The proposed ordinance would in effect ban homeowners, because this applies to homeowners as well as contractors, homeowners from working on their own properties entirely on Saturday and Sunday. No sounds of construction could be made. Any deviations from that for working on a Saturday would require prior written approval from the city. If somebody is undergrounding prior to seven AM, that's a rare circumstance. I think the city could probably either deal with that, or that won't be going on for very long, rather than create a construction ban. So the county in their construction noise in the general plan, at least attempts to define what construction noise is. Rio Del simply says no construction activity earlier than seven AM or later than six PM Monday through Friday, which is when people get home from work and still have a couple hours of daylight to get work done, because I hear my neighbors and the saw is kicking on, people can get a little bit of work done. It would also prohibit anyone from working or repairing their earthquake damage on the weekends. So no construction over the weekends is absolutely unnecessary and unreasonable for homeowners that are trying to repair their homes with very little assistance. It simply makes it harder. I don't think that there is a citywide problem that would justify the noise ordinance. Certainly not a construction ban. If you do want to do a construction noise ordinance, there's ways that you can do it. There's ones that are out there that define your terms, have expansive hours that go till eight PM at night, include the weekends, have provisions for what if you're in the middle of pouring concrete and that six PM hits. There's all kinds of reasons why the proposed language is insufficient. Also, the penalty language, the current statute has up to a thousand dollars in penalties. So a homeowner could be up to a thousand dollars in penalties trying to repair their earthquake damage without quitting their day job. So personally, I like to hear construction going on in the city. That means Rio Del is building back. Almost a year after the earthquake, we heard silence, nothing going on, because everybody was dealing with bureaucracy and money and everything. So hearing construction going on, that's good, that's progress. And I would like to not create an ordinance that would inhibit that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience want to make a comment? Any hands raised? Okay, questions from the council?
Yeah, I actually agree with that one because I myself like to build lots of things, lots of times. And without any clear indication of what construction we're talking about, table saws, hand saws and stuff, I go Saturday and Sunday on my days off when I can do that. And I have no problem doing it from six to seven, or from seven to six. I usually wait till nine because I don't want to make my, or my neighbors angry and so I think it needs a lot more clarification as to what we call construction versus owner home modifications or crafts or hobbies that require construction type materials or equipment. And I for one gardening in the backyard right now where I'm using a bobcat to moon guard around in love, so I can only do that on Saturday and that's, I would say that was construction, but still something that only I can do on weekends. Or after six PM when I get home, so yeah, I agree wholeheartedly that there needs a lot more clarification before finalizing.
That's it. Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
I think I'm concurrent, concurrent for homeowners. As far as general contractors. That's a different situation. For homeowners to be able to do stuff on Saturday and Sunday in particular. I agree with Mr. Wood. That we need to put some more clarification to protect the homeowners.
Yeah. Thank you. I also agree. I, there's usually some kind of saw running at my house on Saturday. So I, I do think that creating a division between like a homeowner and a giant construction company or contractor, general contractor, and then maybe just defining construction noise, things like that. I would be on board with some of those traditions.
I believe those are all valid points. Just off the top of my head here. Your council could direct staff to modify the ordinance to basically limit it from seven AM to dusk Monday through Saturday, or if you like, we could do that seven days a week as well. And then actually have an exemption for homeowner activity.
What do we think?
Something that sounds.
That, that sounds fair to me.
What are the other noise ordinance as far as times? I'm sorry, what's that? The other annoying ordinance is as far as time frames, music?
Most of them are seven to six. That I've seen, but there are other ones that I've seen as late as eight PM. But in the summertime, you're right, when it's light until almost nine thirty, quarter to ten at night. By myself, of course, I don't have a neighbor within a half mile, but I'm outside working many times, you know, whether it's with a bobcat or mini excavator or even a chainsaw. I am out there working, so I, I personally believe, and I appreciate Mr. Wood bringing this to our attention for discussion. I personally believe that seven AM to dusk, and even seven days a week is appropriate. And if that's the direction of the council, I can certainly modify the ordinance and bring it back into second reading in that modified format.
I'm, I'm good with that.
So, yeah. So you just, we just carry forward to the next.
Yes, the first reading, and the purpose of the first reading is really to flush out the talking points here. And again, I appreciate Mr. Wood bringing this to our attention. And I think in the end is what I could work out of the community.
Great. Okay, so I will now close the public hearing and we will continue our reading until our next meeting on August twentieth at six PM. And we will move along to the next one, which is introduction first reading by title only of ordinance number four zero six dash two zero two four, amending chapter thirteen point ten sewer rates and regulations, sections thirteen point ten point one seven zero, thirteen point ten point two one zero, thirteen point ten point two two zero, and thirteen point ten point four six seven of the Rio Del Municipal Code, page sixty-one in our packets. City manager.
All right, thank you, Mayor Proton Carter, members of the council. I just wanted, before I turn it over to Sunshine, just thank Sunshine Kelly for working on some of these detailed type of issues with the several ordinances. I think it's long overdue, but with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Mayor Proton and members of the city council. As provided to you on the medium of July sixteenth of this year, Scott presented the need for clarifying language in the city of Rio Del's Municipal Code, Chapter thirteen point ten sewer rate regulations. Presented to you tonight is the first reading of this ordinance, page sixty-one of your packet. City legal has approved the language to these amendments. All changes are additive and no previous language to the ordinance has been removed. Basically, we're looking for clarifying language to help our homeowners with sewer latherals and septic systems, things like that. So if you don't have any questions for me, I suggest that you open up for public hearing and a simple public assessment.
Okay, do we have council questions?
The, uh, the, uh, on the lateral, the collateral still homework responsibility is still only from his property up to his property management, is that correct?
Exactly.
That's all.
Councilmember Orr?
So it says pre-existing multiple sewers of more than one residence not owned by the same person on the same ladder. Which, uh, thirteen dot ten dot one seventy requires this to multiple service connections, where there is a pre-existing multiple use sewer service, the city shall establish additional accounts and charges. Because that, talking about the multiple homes of one lateral.
Whether it's pre-existing, uh, lateral, each of the property owners has established their own lateral on their respective property parcels.
Right.
Yes.
So that, I mean, if it's been in place for, I don't know, I know several houses in Rio Del that have stacked laterals running across other people's property and so on and so forth. Does that become their problem then, when now we put this into effect and now you have to put your lateral in because?
This is clarifying language when people are selling their homes and they have a lateral test.
Okay.
So they can't pass their lateral test because they can't plug off their neighbor.
Okay.
So then we start this conversation with the neighbor, hey, you need to have your own private lateral on your private property. And then once they establish where they want that lateral to be in their lower cleanup, then we can put in a lower lateral to the sewer main. So it is their responsibility to have their own sewer lateral on their own private property. So this is just helping clarify that language. So if somebody has, you know, they go to sell their home and they can't pass the test and they're like, hey, neighbor, and neighbor's like, ah, you know, so we're just trying to help facilitate that language to help everybody out. So it's clear.
So it's not one of those we're going looking for people that?
No, not at all. No.
Question. Now suddenly, I'm thinking of one of the houses that are above higher elevations. They sell off cherry at one time. They went across, rather than go up your main line is, is off cherry, I think, now. You have to do a lift. And I think we see on the ceiling, I think there's maybe on the long street, down, down by ceiling.
Are you talking about people's private lathers?
They go across the people's lateral. Goes from their sewer line, goes across right out the back, they run down to.
Okay, then that would all be gravity.
It's all, yeah, it's all gravity, but it's going across whoever is below them instead of having to go up.
Yeah, again, this would just be specific to, like, if it becomes an issue when they go to sell their home, like, if they can't pass the lateral test.
You're just doing a lateral.
Yes.
You're not having.
So when you go to do a lateral test and someone is plugged into it, you can't plug off theirs to be the pressure test. You know what I'm saying? So if their lateral is going through someone else's property and you can still plug it off and do a lateral test, it's not, it's still going to pass.
They, they still gotta, they gotta have a
A lower cleanup and.
They gotta have a local way to plug off their, uh,
Yes.
They, they don't have to tear the ladder off of them.
Not if it's, if it passes, no.
They just have to, just have to put it up like another clean hour.
Yeah, a lower cleanup at the property line.
That's true.
Thank you. Um, I have no questions at this time, but I'll open it up to the public if anybody would like to speak on this. Any hands raised? Any emails? No more at all? If not, then I think we can go ahead and move forward. Am I right, city manager?
Correct. So just like the previous items, this is the first reading.
Yes.
Uh, the proposed ordinance, so the recommendation would be to continue the consideration, approval, adoption of the proposed ordinance to, uh, August twentieth, twenty twenty.
All right. Well, we will continue this item until August twentieth, twenty twenty four. Oh, do we have a motion? Oh, do we have a motion to, um, revisit this on August twentieth?
So many.
Our second?
Oh.
All votes? Three zero. Thank you. Uh, may, thank you. Uh, this is important. I guess we're moving on to council reports and communications. Council member Wilson?
I don't have any, this is August. There's only something named this month. And that's a routine thing. They don't feel they can live on August and then I, I just park, I know I might see it later. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else.
Okay, thank you. Council member Orr?
Um, we haven't had an HCO meeting, uh, have one this month, uh, end of the month, but other than that, not much to report. Uh, Wildwood Days great. I didn't get to go, but I could hear the music from my yard and whoever was singing in the second part and Domingos. Well done. Um, my dogs weren't howling all weekend. Well, that was before the fire trucks went past.
Yes.
Um, no, it was really nice. It was uh, I gotta say, Rio Del Police Department did an amazing job with either ringing it in or keeping people contained where they should have been instead of wandering through the streets following down drains. Nice, nice.
Thank you. Uh, I also want to thank city staff. I want to thank uh, the fire department more than anything, the chamber of commerce, the police department, everybody. The uh, Wildwood Days was really, really great this year. Um, I attended everything. I I loved it. I think that it is very important for us uh, that we have one weekend a year that we get to really, really celebrate Rio Del and and how glad we all are to live here and how grateful we all are for our community and um, like, like you said, the local band is just phenomenal and everybody did a wonderful job. The parade was great and the barbecue was good and all those things. Um, so another one, another year in the books and I think I'm I'm still tired from it, but uh, but we'll recover. It's okay. Um, and the other thing I wanted to say is that I didn't really notice a ton of trash lying around either, which I have because I live right by you where people park for the Domingos thing and in the, in years past, I, there's been some trash buildup right on that corner. I didn't notice that this year or really anywhere else. So I think, um, we just, thanks to the community too, because we have such a wonderful, little tight-knit city here and um, I think that Wildwood Days just felt really wholesome and and nice this year. It always does, but I I say it every year, so I'm saying it now. Uh, so thanks to everybody for that. Okay, this Thursday, I'm uh, attending a fire district board meeting and a school board meeting. Um, Proper Wellness is hosting another cleanup day this Friday, uh, three thirty PM to five thirty PM. Meet at Proper Wellness and um, when you participate, you are entered to win a one hundred dollar gift card from their store. So that's a nice incentive for people to come out. So if anybody's listening or wants to attend a cleanup day, uh, they're doing a really, really nice job over there. Um, we have a Parks Master Plan survey that has gone live. You will see my signs all over the signs, they're not mine, they're the park signs uh, posted over town with a QR code. There's also links on the website. Um, there's an email, parks@cityrio del.ca.gov for anybody who has questions and paper copies are, will be available at the resource center at Route one oh one at Proper Wellness and of course here at City Hall starting tomorrow. So I really, really encourage everybody to fill out these surveys. Um, it, all it is is gauging public input on what the community would like to see in the future of parks within the city of Rio Del and uh, city-owned parks. I'll be clear about that. Our, our one functioning park right now is Fireman's Park and the city does not own that. So while it is a wonderful park, um, we need more input on city-owned parks. So if you work here, if you own a business here, if you rent, if you own, if you spend any time at all in Rio Del, please, please, please take this park survey and make your voice heard as we uh, get ready to move forward, uh, envisioning parks of the future. And that is, it's great. So with that, I, yeah.
Uh, I'm sorry to backtrack on Wildwood Days, but I had a chance to talk to a couple lifelong residents and I said um, from when they were younger and now that Wildwood Days is moving in the proper direction.
I love that.
They backed off for a while, they're kind of scaled back or I don't, I'm not sure what happened, not from here, but they said it's going really well. They look forward to next year.
Oh, I appreciate you sharing that, Robert. I I did overhear people at the barbecue saying, God, it just keeps getting better and better.
No, it's getting more and more.
It's getting more.
I think it's more family work.
Right.
Previously, uh, it went to um, well, like I said, water races, you had bar, bar, getting your, put a bar and bar and
Yeah.
some other things like that. Where I think now it's more family.
Yeah, which is wonderful. And and it's fun, you know, I don't even have children, but I I love Wildwood Days. I participate in as much as I possibly can. I just think it's a really important thing for the community. I'm really happy to hear that the community enjoys that. Okay, thank you for circling back to that. I will all positive Rio Del feedback. May color. Um, and with that, our next meeting is August twentieth here at six PM. I will answer any motion for adjournments.
So many.
All right. I'll see you August twentieth at six PM.